Hi. We can see you.
Okay, great.
We'll see you at seven.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's special meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, and this is our 7:00 PM special meeting. Please be advised that assisted listening devices are on the table at the back of the room for anyone who needs them. And our deputy city clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
Mayor McCauley.
Here.
And I want to note that Councilmember Hoxey is appearing via Zoom from the open and public location noted on the agenda. As a result, all votes tonight will be by roll call as required by the Brown Act. Councilmember Hoxey will let us know if there is any member of the public wishing to speak from her location. And she will also let us know if she has any Zoom connection or other technical related issues.
Absolutely.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Next, we'll turn to item C, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda? Mayor and councilmembers, no changes from staff tonight. In that case, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
I'll move adoption.
A second.
Will the deputy city clerk please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember G.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Aye.
And Mayor McCauley.
Aye.
That takes us to item D, which is items for the good of the city, and there are no items listed on For the Good of the City tonight. So that takes us to item E, which is public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda. If a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. So I do see we have one speaker card for someone who would like to address the council. And if there is anyone else who would like to address the council tonight as part of public forum, you can either fill out a speaker card or simply come up to the podium when I call you to speak. The first speaker card I have is for David Turner, and I noticed that you indicated public forum and rezoning. Would you like to wait for the next agenda or?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So our next agenda item will be the public hearing. But if anyone would like to speak now during public forum, instead of waiting for that, you're welcome to do so. Yes, please come up to the podium.
Sorry, I have young kids at home. Hello. Honorable Mayor Malcony and honorable councilmembers, my name is Amy Heinschayek. And my spouse, two young children, and I have lived in the Bear Ridge neighborhood of Arinda since 2023. I am in strong support of the rezoning of downtown and opportunity sites identified in the agenda. We have started a chapter of East Bay for everyone with some of my neighbors who feel like me that we need to make space for new neighbors and welcome them at all income levels. We call ourselves Inclusive Arinda, and we welcome you to join us. We call ourselves Inclusive Orinda, and we welcome you to join us. We want to see Orinda be compliant with our housing element so that the Housing Accountability Act doesn't come into play and the builder's remedy triggered. We want Orinda to follow state laws to help continue state funding streams. Finally, we want to stay away from HCD's Housing Accountability Unit as the steps they take to rectify noncompliance can lead to less local control. Most importantly, we urge urgently support multifamily housing in Orinda. We need places for grown children, seniors, teachers, school employees, firefighters, and other public servants to live with us in Orinda so they don't have to suffer the Bay Area's mega commutes to their jobs here. We are personally aware of valued child caregivers who had to leave their jobs in Orinda taking care of our kids due to the high cost of housing and long commutes. These workers worked at Holy Shepherd Community Preschool and Sleepy Hollow Elementary School. There are so few places for seniors to downsize should they wish to do so as an M.T. nester. It is so hard for people to remain in Orinda after they graduate college. If we want our 20-something-year-olds remaining in our community, we need to make space for them and their future young families that they will have someday. Finally, all the 28 downtown rezoning sites and all the opportunity sites will help revitalize downtown. They will create a more vibrant community where small businesses can thrive. Everybody wants a walkable downtown so we don't have to drive to surrounding areas for food and entertainment. Let's make that happen together. We appreciate the new EIR on which the current rezoning is determined. We believe that this thoughtful analysis sufficiently addresses concerns of evacuation. It includes specific mitigation measures, including using wildfire modeling. For future conversation or to learn more about Inclusive Orinda, you can find us on the Inclusive Lafayette website for now, as we're the little sister to the Inclusive Lafayette Chapter of East Bay for Everyone. We very much appreciate your consideration and thank you so much to the staff and all the professionalism and the detailed analysis that they did to put this together for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment and for taking the time away from little ones to be here. Would anybody else like to make public comment during the public forum part of tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, and I have no other speaker cards for that. We will close public forum and move on to our public hearing. Tonight's public hearing is the Housing Element Implementation, including introduction of Ordinance 25-04, Ordinance 25-05, Resolution 52-25A, and Resolution 52-25B regarding amendments to the General Plan and zoning and adoption of the Objective Design Standards. Our city attorney will now review the hearing procedure for tonight's meeting, and the process will also be shown on the slides. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Malkani. You have taken care of item one on the list, and I am now doing item number two. As you can see, item number three, immediately following my review of the procedure, will be councilmember recusal statements. Staff is anticipating one recusal tonight, specifically Mayor Malkani will recuse herself and leave the room when the council takes up the non-downtown sites because she and her parents own and occupy a condo in Miramonte Gardens, which is in Maraga, across the street from the Miramonte High School site. Staff has prepared for this recusal tonight by segmenting, excuse me, by segmenting tonight's proposal into the General Plan and zoning changes into two separate parts. The first is the non-downtown sites, the second is the downtown sites. Mayor Malkani, as noted, will recuse herself from the first and then come back to participate in the second, that is, the downtown sites. This is in keeping with the FPPC's segmentation rule, which directs the council should first take up issues where one of its members is recused, reach a final decision on that matter without the recused member participating, and then they can come back and participate in the remaining issues. Returning now to the procedure on the slide. After number three comes four, that's going to be, as usual, your staff presentation. Then council can ask questions of staff. In recognition of Mayor Malkani's expected recusal, we would request the council take special care tonight to not move from questions to deliberation during this portion of the agenda. Likewise, if you have very specific detailed questions about now and downtown or downtown sites, you may defer those until that portion of the agenda. After staff has answered all of your questions, the mayor will then open public comment. And each member of the public is going to be, as usual, permitted three minutes to speak. Once we've heard from all the speakers, the mayor will close the public hearing and the item will be before the council for deliberation. As noted, we recommend taking up the non-downtown sites because of Mayor Malkani's recusal. Vice Mayor Iverson will preside during this portion. Once the council completes its deliberation of the non-downtown sites, the mayor can return and the whole council can deliberate the downtown, excuse me, the downtown sites. As already noted, all your votes tonight will be by roll call because councilmember Hoxey is participating via teleconference from a noticed open and public location. That completes my summary of the process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions about the summary of the process from the council?
When I have a question that concerns both or all, when does that take place?
I think that that would be a general question. So if you were, for example, wanting to ask about the environmental review document or about housing element law more generally, you could ask that during the, immediately following the staff presentation.
Before mayor leaves?
Correct. If I have concerns, I'll, yeah, yeah, I'll jump in. Thank you.
Any other questions about the process for our city attorney? Okay, then I would next like to state why I'm recusing myself from the discussion of the non-downtown sites. As the city attorney noted, my parents and I purchased a condo together at Miramonte Gardens in Maraga, which is across the street from Miramonte High School. And because of this property interest, I've decided to recuse myself from the council's deliberations and decisions tonight regarding all the non-downtown sites. The condo we own is within 500 feet of the Miramonte High School property. It is more than 1,000 feet from the housing element site on that parcel. I'm recusing myself out of an abundance of caution and to underscore my respect for this important process. So with that, I think, unless there's any questions about my recusal statement, I think we would turn to the staff for the staff report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Malkani. I don't know why I hear an echo. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public, I am Associate Planner Darren Hughes, here to present on the proposed rezonings and general plan amendments that we are looking at tonight. So program overview, we are looking at a general plan amendment, which comes with a general plan map amendment for a total of 31 sites in Orinda, zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments for those same sites. These proposed actions are going to implement housing element actions 1A through 1D as well as 3E. So brief overview, this would result in the ultimate rezoning of six-cycle housing element sites. 26 of these are downtown commercial and downtown office sites. These would be rezoned to downtown core at 30 dwelling units per acre, downtown core at 55 dwelling units per acre, and downtown general, downtown core being the, essentially, the upzoning of downtown commercial and downtown general, essentially being the upzoning of downtown office, primarily to add as a permitted use multifamily residential housing. Then we have five sites that are located outside of downtown. These would all be rezoned, or portions of these sites would be rezoned to residential high-density, 25 dwelling units per acre, and residential high-density, 40 dwelling units per acre. So this is based off of the six-cycle housing element requirements. So here we are looking at the regional housing needs allocation. If I mention this again tonight, I will say RENA. This is an allocation that we get from ABAG and from ultimately the state that requires that we, as a community, show that we have the capacity to meet a certain number of units, to be able to have a certain number of units developed. It's not a construction mandate. So this is breaking down what we are assigned by ABAG in the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income categories for a total capacity that we need to show of 1,359 units. And I do want to point out right here in above moderate, we have 557 units listed. There was an erroneous number in the staff report that said 559, so this is correcting that. Sites inventory. So we have to identify that we can support the development of these units, and we can do that via a number of different ways. So the first thing that we are able to do is show that we have an existing capacity, things that are already zoned for housing. That was going to provide credit for 623 units. This is mostly vacant residential sites, projections for ADUs, and the Santa Maria Church site, which was rezoned to allow for multifamily housing in the fifth cycle. Then we get credit for approved projects during the last cycle, but that haven't broken ground yet. So that's the Wilder Country House Memory Care Project and Vista Verde Senior Housing Project, total of 90 units. And then we need to look for, once we get beyond those numbers, we have to figure out what we need to do to try to get that capacity in other areas. So we need, we have a total number of 907 sites to be rezoned, or sites that will be rezoned to allow for 907 units. Downtown sites make up 421 of those units, and opportunity sites make up 286 of those units for the three church sites and Miramonte High School, and then 200 units that are not counted within the sites inventory at this time for the Caltrans Gateway Site. Going to show, okay, this table is very small right here, but I wanted to put this up just to show an example of how this looks. These are the downtown sites. This breaks this down into different categories. So we're looking at the existing zoning districts and what its land use is, land use category is within the general plan, the acreage, the current density units per acre. But this is where we projected, if we are rezoning these sites to X units per acre, what could they allow? And so there's a maximum, I'll actually show a zoom of that. So there's a maximum capacity, which is if someone were to come in and reason, or sorry, someone were to come in and propose the maximum number of units based off of the maximums that we are setting. But what HCD accepts is this realistic capacity. They say we're going to apply a 60% number. That's supposed to account for some flexibility. Sites may not necessarily be developed, or sites may come in with a lower level of development. So that's where all of our numbers are based on this realistic capacity. So that's where we get that 421 units within the downtown, broken up into lower, moderate, and above moderate income units. All right, so the implementing actions, these are actions within the six-cycle housing element that are things that the city is on the hook for doing. Five of these actions pertain to the rezonings, and we have a deadline of early 2026 to meet these. So just a brief overview, we've got the downtown precise plan, which, to be clear, the downtown precise plan is not on the table tonight. We are not bringing that back for full evaluation. There is going to be a future opportunity to look at that. We are only coming forward with the sites that we are legally required to, for HCD, to rezone in order to show that we're meeting capacity. But this is the, this is the specific action item that states that we will rezone in the downtown to allow for 421 units. Housing element opportunity sites for 1B, that's allowing multifamily residential uses at the four sites, at portions of four sites outside of downtown. Then the Caltrans Gateway Site Development, allow multifamily residential uses at the Caltrans Gateway Site. 1D residential zoning districts and land use designation. This is essentially making our general plan and zoning amendments coordinate with each other. So establish those new zoning districts and land use categories. And then finally, Objective Design Standards, 3E, adopt multifamily Objective Design Standards. We're proposing that tonight in conjunction with the downtown sites. There is a separate effort for sites outside of downtown. So moving into the general plan amendments that we're proposing, two new land use classifications for downtown core and downtown general. This is going to go essentially for both the general plan amendments and the zoning text amendments. But essentially, what we are doing here is taking the existing zones from commercial to core and from the office to general, and adding multifamily residential as a use. So these categories that you're seeing here are going to be very similar overall to the categories for in the general plan. It would be downtown community business and downtown, I'm escaping, there's a land use category that's escaping me, but these are basically built to coordinate with those, to allow the same uses as those allow, but just to add multifamily residential and mixed-use development on top of that. And then we would be looking at two new land use classifications for outside downtown. So we would have residential high-density multifamily. This is from 20 units per acre to 25 units per acre. And then very high-density multifamily from 20 to 40 units per acre. So we would adding, be adding these two land use classifications. This is just showing the general plan insets that we are proposing. These are updated graphics for the general plan to be plugged in, one for the downtown and one for each individual site. The reason that we are going for insets for each of the individual sites is because most of the general planned map, most of the general plan mapping is based off of specific parcels. In this case, since we are rezoning individual portions of parcels, we want to have this to be, we want this to be as clear as possible for anyone coming to us later and trying to figure out where these zones are because this establishes the meets and bounds for the areas that are being rezoned. So looking now at proposed zoning amendments. In the downtown, we would have the D Core 30, D Core 55, and DG, so the downtown core zones and downtown general. The only difference between 30 and 55 is that they allow for, or 55 allows for more density. We, we would be allowing mixed-use development primarily is what we would be going for, vertical mixed-use development within the downtown core with some minor exceptions. And in the downtown general, that would allow for mixed-use developments in horizontal, vertical configurations, or as the only use on a site in what is currently office proposed for downtown general. So overall, for the downtown, there are going to be proposed change, or there are proposed changes within Chapter 17.8 Downtown of the Orinda Municipal Code. These add clarifying definitions. They clarify language and graphics related to how retail spaces and use categories work. They create the downtown core and downtown general zoning districts and establish all of the uses that are allowed and property development standards. And they incorporate by reference the Objective Design Standards for multifamily residential housing in the downtown core and downtown general zoning districts. So this map shows the, the basic breakdown. You've got decor, the purple sites that are shown here at the two ends of downtown. Those are decor 55, 55 units per acre, generally chosen for these particular sites because of the streamlined ownership of these parcels, allowing for the potential for a more consolidated effort for looking at these parcels as one potential project. And then the rest that is in green is the proposed downtown core 30, allowing for 30 units per acre. And then anything that is here in yellow is proposed for the downtown general at 25 units per acre. And all of these share the same lower range of a minimum of 20 units per acre. So the Objective Design Standards, that's the primary method of implementing the standards that we are going to be looking at if someone comes forward with a proposal that includes multifamily residential housing. The way the zoning text is written is if you want to come in and modify your existing business, your existing building, and it's just, there's commercial uses there, you're allowed to do so. You do the, you would do that under the prior regulations. If you're proposing a new building that is just office or just, or sorry, not office in this case, just commercial within the downtown, within the downtown core, or yes, just office, you would be going in under the older regulations, which would require design review in pretty much every circumstance. These standards kick into place as soon as someone comes forward with a project that includes multifamily residential housing. Um, these standards kick into place as soon as someone comes forward with a project that includes multifamily residential housing. The intent of this is to streamline the development proposal review and entitlement process. We have a lot of state laws that are in effect that basically allow people to, um. Only apply with objective standards, these set those objective standards that people would have to comply with, that an applicant would have to comply with in order to get a project approved. Um, so essentially it replaces design review and allows us to maintain control over the standards that we want to see. Developed within downtown Arinda, um, the control form enassing roof, design walls, windows, building types and, uh, ways that buildings interface with the streets. And then this is just a breakdown of the chapters, um, uh, downtown zones is where a lot of the development standards are located. That's things like setbacks and maximum heights, um, primary changes that you would see within that from what we allow in the downtown right now is that. Building heights for downtown core go up to forty five feet in height from thirty five feet in the current zones. Um, and in the downtown office right now, we allow for twenty five feet in height, we would in downtown general allow for thirty five feet in height. Um, and then there's a reduction in the overall setbacks, uh, to be more in line with a more pedestrian friendly environment. Something that brings, is intended to bring some of the buildings closer to the street where that is possible. One change that occurred, uh, that we sent as late correspondence yesterday, um, there was a versioning error, I apologize for that. Um, I have gone through line by line in order to verify that changes that we had reviewed as staff, um, a while ago. Have actually been implemented, so some changes included, they're basically all clarifications or minor adjustments. Um, that are administrative in nature, for instance, removing references to the downtown precise plan. Um, there was, uh, one set of changes to the site standards within the landscaping portion. Um, that address some additional requirements, um, a need to, um, adhere to, uh, additional MOFDs or the fire district. Fire district standards and regulations, um, as well as references to a, uh, landscape, uh, savvy, oh. Yeah, landscape savvy, there's a, there's a.
Fire saving.
Thank you, fire savvy landscaping book, um, but, uh, for the most part, these changes were fully ministerial, or sorry, fully administrative. Um, and clarifying, um, and corrected some cross references and added a couple of notes. Where regulations hadn't been completely and fully clear before, um, there's nothing in what we have proposed here. Uh, that substantially changes the overarching intent, uh, from what the planning commission reviewed and approved. Oh, with one exception, I'm sorry, appendix B was originally in the proposal that was approved by the planning commission. Um, staff felt that this was not necessarily appropriate to keep within the objective design standards because it was a chapter that was not objective. Um, it had text in it that said that these can't be applied objectively, but it's what we want to see. Um, so this was a design style guidelines that had only one style in it. This is something that staff feels would be better to look at in the future if we are interested in, um, more fine tuning the types of styles that would be allowed in downtown Arinda. Seeking a consultant that's able to provide a few additional styles to work with the community to establish. Um, a more fine tuned vision for what Arindans want to see downtown. Um, so as it is, it is a document that we have that is non regulatory, so we removed it from the objective design standards book for now. Um, this is just showing the type one space, type two space, these graphics have been updated for the, um, zoning text amendments. Um, the reason that I'm showing this here is because one of the things that I wanted to make sure was addressed is that. Um, even though we are introducing the uses of multifamily residential housing downtown. Um, we are still requiring that these, these types of spaces be adhered to. So we look at type one and type two spaces in particular within the downtown, um, within the downtown core. Uh, well, downtown commercial and also downtown core. Um, so the objective design standards have been designed to basically state that what you, or. The zoning text has been designed to basically state that when you propose development that would occupy what is considered a type one space. Um, what has been designated a type one space, you do have to propose that, um, there are commercial uses, retail uses that are going to go in there. In line with what we currently require for those spaces. Um, there are, uh, a couple of very specific cases where we can see, um, properties that are setback further from the street. Um, I don't want to do that, properties that are setback further from the street that don't have any designated a type one space in those instances, very limited instances. Someone would be able to come forward and propose multifamily residential development that does not contain a commercial use. Because it does not contain any type one spaces. Um, now the proposed zoning amendments for the opportunity sites, so we've got five total sites. Um, an undeveloped portion of each site proposed, is proposed to be rezoned to allow multifamily housing. Um, existing uses and structures on the opportunity sites would not be impacted, so we're not changing the uses. Uh, where the churches and where the schools, uh, themselves are actually located. We're specifically rezoning areas of the sites that are currently undeveloped, so this is parking lots and, um, just complete green space at this point. Um, the, those areas of rezoning, of rezoning would allow one hundred percent, uh, residential use. Um, so right now we don't have any proposed housing projects on any of these opportunity sites. And the proposed rezonings would allow for, um, future multifamily housing on, on, uh. Proposed rezonings would allow for future multifamily housing on the opportunity sites. So there are two new zoning districts that would be created for this, RH twenty five, that's twenty to twenty five units per acre. And RH forty at, uh, twenty to forty units per acre. Um, this map, this graphic shows where these are located, so site one, um, up in the corner, that's the Caltrans Gateway Site. That's the site that would allow twenty to forty units per acre, RH forty. And two, three, four and five, two, three and four being the religious sites and five being the Miramonte High School. That would allow twenty to twenty five units per acre. Um, so these sites, uh, in addition to that, they, they generally fall in line with the standards, the development standards that we set for. Um, the re, the existing residential medium density zones and the senior housing overlay and high density overlay districts. Um, yeah, in addition to the differences, however, in the density, we would have a maximum of thirty six feet for the building height for RH twenty five. And fifty feet building height for RH forty, three stories and RH twenty five, five stories and RH forty. Um, California Environmental Quality Act, I will just touch on this very briefly, an environmental in. Uh, impact report was prepared for the entirety of the plan Arinda project. Um, that was, so that was there to analyze potential environmental impacts, impacts of the whole plan. Um, that includes aesthetics, cultural resources, noise, population and housing, transportation and wildfire and a few others. Um, this was adopted by the city council on January thirty first, um, it was rescinded in twenty twenty four due to a two A and O C lawsuit. And then recertified, um, as a revised final environmental impact report for Plan Arinda on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, it does include, did I skip one here? No. It does include the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, so this is a program that basically states that the city and potential developers. Are on the hook for doing certain things in order to try to mitigate some of the things for which we found, um, there would be significant impacts within the EIR. Um, so I've got a couple of examples here, TRA one and TRA two, both, um, both concern VMT reduction measures, so. Um, we had a meeting last week with a consultant who is established, establishing those standards to basically figure out where projects can screen out. And what type of projects we need to adhere to these standards and to do the appropriate research and appro, uh, and appropriate studies. That would then result in, um, an understanding of what they need to do to mitigate their impacts on traffic in a local, um. In, in a, in a specific area, in the area of their development. Um, there are wildfire measures as well, um, develop a wildfire hazard assessment and plan. Um, as well as sites sub, subject to shelter in place guidelines, um. There are, uh, project design wildfire risk reduction, so largely looking at landscaping and structural engineering features. And trying to figure out what's going to be, um, safer for construction, um. In, uh, in light of the, the wildfire risk. Um, WFR six, uh, pursue grant funding for pedestrian bike and emergency vehicular improvements between Maraga and Arinda Bart. Um, specifically to look at potentially widening, uh, Maraga Way and allowing for, um, additional, a potential additional lane for, um, travel. For emergency vehic, vehicular access. Um, and then WFR nine, pursuit of development impact fees to improve wildfire evacuation. So this is looking at nexus studies to establish additional fees that may be required of projects. Um, in order to, um, in, implement certain, uh, systems that would help us with wildfire evacuation, traffic signaling priority, for instance. Um, so a couple of relevant state laws to the actions tonight, um, just looking at, um, some of the things that are already allowed in the city. SB four is by right housing on religious and higher education sites. Um, so this would apply to the three church sites that are proposed for rezonings. Um, it was effective January first, twenty twenty four, it basically allows for by right approval for affordable housing projects on land that's owned by. Um, religious institutions, higher education sites, um, these projects would be exempt from SEQA. Um, hundred percent of the project total units, uh, are for lower income households, thirty percent of those can be for, uh, moderate income households. Um, five percent maybe for staff, uh, this is allowed at the default density, which in Arinda is twenty density units per acre. Um, and can utilize state density bonus law, um, we have a couple of. Graphics here that show, um, an assessment of what that would allow for, um, there's basically, the entirety of these sites could be used. In order to establish the amount of units that would be able to be developed on these sites. Um, so looking at twenty units per acre across these full sites, we'd be looking at a, at up to two hundred fifty three units. Um, if this, uh, if a developer were to come forward looking to utilize this law. Um, what the rezonings do is essentially give a sandbox of, um, a different application, uh, route where they would go through. Um, objective design standards and, uh, where applicable, um, uh, design review. Um, we're looking at rezoning portions of the sites that are much smaller than the overarching, um, sites themselves. And the densities are set based off of those portions of the sites. So we're looking at twenty to twenty five units that would result across all three sites in ninety nine to one hundred twenty four units, uh, capacity here. Um, Assembly Bill twenty two ninety five, uh, this is by right housing on property owned by a local education agency. This is essentially allows for schools, um, to establish a portion of their site as workforce housing. So it's, these have to be projects that are at least ten units, they've got to be deed restricted for thirty percent lower income units and a total of one hundred percent combined lower moderate income units. Um, they have to be offered, uh, first to, uh, rent to agency employees, then local public employees, and then finally general members of the public. Um, this doesn't have necessarily a direct correlation because this is, uh, the, the. The number of units that you could get here is based off of more of a development footprint rather than the entire site. Um, so there's not any direct correlation, it is simply something that is on the books that Miramonte would have access to. Um, without any, any rezonings. Um, affirmatively furthering fair housing, so this is just, um, something that's here as a brief reminder for why we have to spread out these sites. Um, so this is a new requirement for housing elements as of this last cycle. Um, it is an analysis, or we need an analysis of fair housing issues, uh, requires neighborhood segregation, income disability analysis. Um, the Rena units essentially can't be concentrated on one site or in one area. Um, so HCD was not going to accept a housing element from the city of Arinda that said, we are going to show that we have capacity. And that we're developing capacity only within the downtown, um, so this is one of those tricky pieces that, uh. Among a couple of other factors caused us to look outside of just downtown Arinda, um, at other opportunity sites. The, um, a couple of other minor, uh, not minor factors, factors that went into this, um, we did look at the Bart site. That was something that was raised by members of the community, um, as an op, option, but that was not going to be accepted by HCD. Just due to the number of factors, uh, that are involved with that, including access issues, um, overhead power lines. Uh, the fact that it is owned by Caltrans and leased to Bart's and the fact that Bart has it on their twenty thirty four and later plan. Um, for considering for transit oriented development, so a number of factors went into that site that basically. As much as staff wants to acknowledge that that would be a great site for housing, um, it's just not something that would ever be developed within this housing element cycle. So that had to be left off the books. Um, public correspondence concerns, so we've received plenty of concerns over time. Um, you will have seen that within the, um, links to the planning commission hearing last time, the number of members that came forward and made comment. Um, the body of comments that we have showing, uh, what members of the public are concerned with. These include wildfire evacuation in South Arinda, especially near Miramonte High School. Um, homeowners insurance issues that residents already face related to wildfire and the concern that these will just go up as we put more residents in place. Traffic congestion and safety concerns with traffic congestion, um, impact on the school capacity in South Arinda. And the school's ability to actually meet demand for new families moving in. Um, difficulties of using La Venida Drive as access to the proposed rezoned Miramonte site. Um, a preference for more housing to be located downtown or at Bart, which I just discussed in brief. Um, appropriateness of citing low income housing at the Caltrans site rather than at downtown. Um, objection to a prior proposed use of the Wilder Shuttle, so a couple of members of the community were opposed to using the Wilder Shuttle. For the Caltrans site, which, um, I do want to point out would be a fully negotiated process. If and when someone ever comes and forward with development at the Caltrans site. And then known issues, uh, the known issue of remediation that's required at the Caltrans site, these were all brought up during the public comment period. Um, we did receive some, uh, items of support, uh, there's a general sentiment among Arindans that, uh. That we need more housing and a no, acknowledgement of the dearth of housing. The, there was a comment that requested more intensive zoning of the Caltrans site than what we're proposing right now. Um, and then some were comments requested that the city ensure the rezonings go forward, um. And that, and pointed out how vital this was to allowing for, uh, more capacity for more families and support for student, or sorry, staff and faculty of the schools, for instance. Um, and just to generally provide more housing options in Arinda. Go on, there we go, so staff recommendations tonight, um, is to take the following actions for the housing element sites located outside downtown. Waive the full reading and introduce ordinance twenty five, twenty five dash zero four. Um, direct staff to bring resolution fifty two dash twenty five A back for adoption. Um, and then for the housing element sites within the downtown, waive the full reading and introduce, uh, ordinance twenty five zero five as amended to reflect. September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, objective design standards, um, that were, uh, forwarded yesterday. And then direct staff to bring resolution fifty two dash twenty five B back for adoption. Uh, next steps, if the recommended actions are taken, this item would be brought back to the city council for a second reading and adoption of the ordinances. And adoption of the resolutions. And, uh, that concludes staff presentation, so I welcome, um, open this up to the council for, uh, questions.
Great, thank you, um, questions from the council? With a reminder that we're not gonna veer into deliberation right now, just questions.
Atlatica, I have a few questions.
Great, um, I think, is that okay? Okay, Councilmember Hoxey, please proceed.
Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation, Darren, it was very thorough. Help me as a layperson and not a planner, understand what these density, what it really means. Is it a range? Is it a specific number? So when you say thirty dwelling units per acre. How tall is that? How, help, help me understand what that density means.
Okay, um, council member, that density is, uh, so the ranges that we're talking about at the minimums and maximums. Are based off of the parcel size or the size of the site that is being rezoned if it's not the entire parcel size. Um, so what that means is we look at a calculation for the size of the parcel, let's say it's one acre. Um, and if it is one acre and it's allowed to have, let's say, twenty to twenty five units per acre. Um, however, development proceeds on that has to, A, meet the development standards, so maximum heights and the setback requirements that are associated with that. Um, and any other objective standards that we have on the books. Um, but it could, in theory, it could take a, a number of different forms. Um, it's, it's a little bit difficult to say which forms are actually going to be used at certain densities. Um, I know for instance that when you're talking about closer to twenty units per acre, you're probably talking in the realm of. you're probably talking in the realm of condos and townhomes. When you're getting up to forty units per acre, you're starting to look at smaller apartment buildings. What I will say is the, the way that the, the heights are set are generally assumed to be about appropriate for the densities that are being proposed. A case in point for that, looking at the residential high density, not the residential very high density, but the residential high density category up to twenty five units per acre. HCD required us in twenty twenty three to look at that a little bit more closely. We had been proposing, I think, a thirty five foot maximum height. They required thirty six feet. They wanted to see thirty six feet because that is something that would comfortably fit three stories for housing. So that's what we generally expect to see at those densities, twenty to thirty, is something that might be three stories tall. When we look at downtown and factor in mixed use developments and we're allowing up to thirty unit, or sorry, thirty units per acre, we're looking at a building that's probably going to have a downstairs dedicated to, or we would hope a downstairs dedicated to commercial uses and maybe two stories above that that are condos and townhomes. Once you get to that, like thirty five units per acre, that's allowing by our code right now, that, the proposed code that would allow four stories. So we're looking at one floor for retail and then three stories on top of that. We're looking more at small apartment building, podium style apartment buildings most likely at that point. Hopefully that helps a little bit with understanding that.
It does. What, I, I, you talked about setbacks, but what do we do to make sure that you're not walking through, you know, a wall of buildings in downtown Arinda? That it's sort of pleasing and, and not, not like just this, you know, sort of commercial cube building with like a wall of, 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 you know, the facade just being, you know, straight up and down.
There are a number of controls for that, councilmember. Primarily, we would be looking within the, the objective design standards. There's the chapter five of that, which is the building facades. Talk about how a building needs to be broken up visually in order to have that, express that visual interest. We do require massing to be broken up along certain lengths for certain types of buildings. There is a chapter in there specifically for how, how the buildings themselves interface with the public realm. So there are standards set to porches and to, which wouldn't be for the downtown commercial area, but standard sets to storefronts and to forecourts. Basically ways of saying, this is how we can break up and provide a little bit of visual interest while allowing for pedestrian accessibility. So there are a lot of controls in the objective design standards for how these buildings would interface with the public right of way. But a realistic answer is that we already have this to a certain extent because of the power lines. So there are easements that run across a lot of these sites that would automatically make it so that you actually can't develop all the way up to the street. So those maximum setbacks, for instance, we have a caveat that states that that maximum setback of ten feet or twenty feet, depending on which zone it is, if there's an easement that is cutting in front of it, the maximum setback just gets set to whatever the, the edge of that easement is. So, so with Arinda being developed in this fashion with those constraints for development already in play, there's, there's going to be a certain amount of, of setback from the streets automatically built into some of these lots. Now, that's not necessarily going to change. If you look at the Country Club Plaza, for instance, there's no, there's no requirement for a setback there. It's ten or it's zero to ten feet at that particular site for the downtown core. But you're already looking at a, a site that Arindans are comfortable with the idea of being right up next to the sidewalk. It's been developed like that for over half a century. So, so we do have areas in town where most likely development would be coming right up to the sidewalk. But we do have the objective design standards to try to make that as pleasing as possible.
Okay. And what about parking? I understand within certain half mile of, of BART, we can't require parking, but we all know people are going to have cars. What, how do we make sure there's some parking included in this housing development?
That is a very difficult question in light of state laws. So we do have parking standards for when someone is proposing parking within the objective design standards. So we do have portions of the document that we can point to to say, you need to do this. If you're providing parking of a certain amount, you need to do this with it and you need to place it here. But when it comes down to use and the requirements for parking, as it stands right now, it is very difficult within a half mile of the BART station to make that requirement and stick that requirement. We can apply that to essentially hotels. To any other use, it's basically up to the developers as to whether or not they would want to propose parking. Now, one thing that I can say for that is typically developers are not as interested in creating apartment buildings or multifamily residential use buildings that don't have at least a minor parking element because it is more difficult to sell those units. And I can also say that outside that mile radius or half mile radius from downtown, which in this particular case really applies mostly to the Country Club Plaza, we can still require parking and parking requirements aren't changing in our code. That is something that we would potentially look at in the future to figure out if there is a reason to change the parking requirements. But for now, the parking requirements haven't changed based off of what we're proposing. In fact, the documents essentially say, see these sections on parking and, and we as staff can only implement that as far as state law will allow us.
Thank you. You explained the by right housing that could be built by the churches and the high school. How would someone, well, first of all, have you had any inquiries? That law has been in effect now for a year. Has anyone come to the planning department inquiring about building housing under that law?
No, councilmember, just as no one has come forward to us with any proposed projects for those sites under a potential rezoning. We haven't seen anything under any of those particular state laws.
And it seems like the state law would actually allow for more housing than what we're potentially zoning for?
Generally speaking, it would. It's a different avenue. It requires different hurdles. So it's kind of a, it is a different ball to play with essentially for developers. But it does technically allow for more housing, yes.
I know we have senior housing in Arinda currently at Monte Verde and, and Arinda Senior Village. Do we have any understanding of how many cars those seniors tend to drive? I see them on buses, you know, going to the Safeway and walking to the park. But I'm curious if I would guess that they don't have as many cars as other homes.
That part I am not an expert on. I do believe that the two urban way, the Vista Verde project was approved with a reduction in overall, the overall number of parking spaces that they had to require, that they were required to provide. Don't know what that reduction was. I imagine that was to some extent based off of an understanding of what the market for senior housing and parking for senior housing is, but that's not my area of expertise.
And I, I think you said this, but it's correct, right? That the revised EIR takes into account the potential for building these sites. So the mitigation measures and everything we approved to get the revised EIR done included these potential sites.
Yes, yes, those apply to these, these sites.
Great. Those were my questions. Thank you, Mayor Mulcany.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoxsey, for excellent questions. You asked a couple of mine.
There you go.
Other councilmember questions? I know Councilmember Riley was about to chime in.
Great job. I think you did an unbelievable job. Didn't look at your notes. I would really appreciate how much information you shared with us, Darren. There's, I came in not really sure about the number of units and I feel a lot better about it now with the slides and the additional documents showing the regular, or realistic capacity of the four hundred and twenty one units. I think I understood that the B of A wasn't going to be counted, but it was on the map. So I just kind of hope that that gets cleared up because that was making me, made me unsure.
Correct.
Whether or not it was being counted. So I don't know if this is going further, but I'd love to see that deleted or not shaded. It's shaded as if it's being counted.
Correct. Councilmember, the direction was that we weren't going to pull that site from, from the rezonings because it was listed as a site in downtown for meeting the requirements. In, there might be a world in which we could technically pull it and not rezone it. But we have opted to go forward with rezoning since it's just the cleanest way to proceed. But as it stands right now, the property owner at B of A does not have any intention to develop housing, which is why it ultimately was pulled, resulted in a no net loss scenario where we had to reassign units to a lower income category at another site that was capable of supporting those. So we're not proposing any additional rezonings to make up for the loss of that site. We were able to pull that capacity and basically deplete our buffer from another site. So as it stands right now, yes, it is there. It does not technically count by HCD standards, but it is in the list of sites to be rezoned by the action, implementation action.
Okay, good explanation. Okay. Plus you have excess units. You have fifteen thirty and you only needed thirteen fifty nine, so.
Yep.
Okay. That wasn't a question, sorry. In your one acre example with twenty twenty five units, can you further walk us through? Just an example of the income levels that would be in those twenty to twenty five units. I imagine it varies, but I'm not sure.
Yes, it would vary depending on the, the size of the project. I guess for.
Well, twenty to twenty five units in one acre, perfect little example, yes. So what, how many, the different income levels or how many units, the lowest level and so on?
We are currently, there's a concurrent effort for implementing one of the other implementation actions. We're working with a consultant on a inclusionary housing ordinance. And that inclusionary housing ordinance is ultimately going to be what sets what is required for someone to develop. So I, I don't have the numbers myself off of this and this may be something that the planning director can speak to in terms of the most recent changes that have been proposed. I know that that came to, I believe that already came to a study session with the council. Is that correct?
It did.
Okay.
Okay, so if it's off point, I can take it back, but I just was trying to get it, understand.
I think just to clarify, within the sites that are being proposed, certain sites have more affordability than perhaps other sites. So some sites have more concentrated low income housing, some have moderate income housing and some are above market or above moderate housing, which is market rate housing. Is that inaccurate?
Yes, and I, and I think to clarify, kind of similar to how this isn't a construction mandate, this is just showing that we have capacity for that. When we have that breakdown, that table that I showed that said, we're getting credit for low income here, moderate here. And that table doesn't mean we are not required to adhere to that. A developer can come forward and propose a different configuration and that's going to be very much a case by case basis. What we are getting credit for when we break down those income categories is a general assessment by HCD that sites of this size and this proximity to transit can support housing at these various income levels. And so it's an approximation, something to show that we in theory could get that capacity. Now, it's going to be on the developers to come forward with projects that actually may or, which may or may not meet those criteria. The inclusionary housing ordinance will help us with the numbers for some of the lower income categories. But ultimately, if someone came forward and, and wasn't meeting, let's say we have a one acre site that said that we could get credit for seven or eight units on it that are lower income households and a developer comes forward and doesn't have seven or eight households that they are proposing for lower income.
One, let's say.
Maybe they just have one or two in line with whatever is passed by the inclusionary housing ordinance. What that may end up doing is trigger a no net loss scenario, kind of like what happened with the Bank of America, in which case we have to reevaluate where we're pulling those, those units.
So it's a very dynamic process.
Yes.
So I think I heard you say that the setbacks were going to get closer, we're going to be smaller and we're going to move closer to the street.
Somewhat, yes.
Somewhat, yes. So is it, does that take away the possibility of having more dining on the sidewalk, on a deeper sidewalk with little parquettes? Does that get lost if you're saying you've got to move to the street?
It depends on what's being proposed. It's fully going to be a case by case basis. If someone's proposing spaces that include restaurant spaces, I would expect in this day and age that that developer is trying to make that a consideration and allow for space that's going to get that outdoor dining as a component. And it's something that even if we can't absolutely require it, we can't say you have to include outdoor dining as a part of this application and you have to set your building back farther in order to get that. It is one of those things where staff does have the discretion to at least have those talks with the developers and see what we can get for the community. So it's definitely something that would be on our minds.
Les, if we have changes tonight, what happens? You know, because if we don't have changes, it's just going to sit for a month or something or a couple of weeks before we come back. What if there are changes? Do we start this process over again or? That are substantive?
So small substantive changes we could take care of this evening. Like if you wanted to change a word or two in the objective design standards, that can be done on the fly. Bigger changes would, yeah, require another meeting. Yeah.
And I believe bigger changes potentially could even require going back to the planning commission. Is that correct?
Again, yeah, it depends what change you have in.
Just curious about the process.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Darren, for all of that and going through all of that. So you did an excellent job of explaining that right now, the sites, the churches and Miramonte High School could already be developed under state law, no matter what we do or don't do tonight, correct?
Correct.
So, but assuming that we move forward as we need to under the housing element requirements, can you explain to us how it would work on those sites? If someone were to decide to want to develop it, would they have the choice to be doing it under SB four? Or would they, how, how would it work between the, excuse me, between the potential rezoning that we're looking at and what the state law already requires?
Right. They would basically choose a process, councilmember. I can offer an analogy. Right now, we have SB nine in play that allows for by rights, fully objective, single family residentially zoned parcels can have up to two units, two primary units proposed on them or have a lot split done and then maybe two units on one side and two units on the other side. There are a lot of different configurations there. But what I'm getting at is that even applies to a new single family residential project. If someone comes forward with an undeveloped lot and says, I want a new home here, they have the option to go through SB nine as a fully ministerial process as long as they're meeting all of the objective development standards. Or they can opt to if they want to go, if they need something else, if they need to go outside the context of what SB nine allows for, they can go the traditional route of design review. And the reason that I'm bringing that up for what's, what is allowed at these sites via state law like SB four versus what we are proposing to rezone, I feel generally speaking that it's more likely that someone would, and this is very case by case basis, it's more likely that someone would come forward under the proposed rezonings because they allow that by right use and a more traditional approach. Still going through in many scenarios, design review and all of the standard reviews and objective standards that we would apply to the site. If they come forward under the state law, there may be a reason for doing so. It's a little bit more difficult in terms of things like the fair wages that have to be paid to workers, to the construction workers for a project. So, so there may be trade offs, however, that would say, you know what? Limiting it to the areas that was, that were rezoned, that's not enough. I do want to go with the whole site. I do want to go with a higher density. So they may opt to make an application under that specific state law, which is going to route it slightly differently. We're still looking at a lot of the same things and making sure the, the objective development standards that are in play for whichever area that they're proposing. There, we're still looking at a lot of the same things. It's just going to be a slightly different process and fully dependent on what they actually need.
But, but as you've described, the point is they have to decide they're going to follow one process or another, right? The city's going to know what they're going to attempt to follow. And then can you remind us in, in this? And then can you remind us in, in this effort relative to the last housing cycle, where does the Santa Maria Church zoning end up now in, in tonight's proposal?
It's not affected by tonight's proposal, the overlay that applies to that site is still in effect. This proposal doesn't change that, that's a separate zone, the high-density overlay. The, the, essentially, we were able to include that in existing capacity because it had been rezoned last cycle, and you're allowed to keep, um, keep sites on for a number of cycles, I believe two cycles, before, before you have to look at something and say, well, it was already included in previous housing elements and, um, uh, was never developed, so something's wrong and we need to reconsider the standards that are in effect for that site in order to get it to account again. So really, it's just here, um, adding to our existing capacity because we've only had it count for one cycle so far.
But that is, um, it is a very real-life example in the community of rezoning that was done, and then there hasn't been any
Correct.
desire to add any new development.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? So the Santa Maria site, just to be crystal clear, continues to be, is proposed, as proposed, it continues to be rezoned during the sixth element and is included in our existing capacity for the sixth element?
Correct. Once we upzone a site, it is very difficult to backtrack from that. So it is currently zoned and will continue to be zoned for multifamily residential housing, should someone want to come forward with an application for that site.
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Riley. How many units, uh, do you recall are on Santa Maria?
I actually don't have that number offhand.
Is it a big number? Because the total number is in the six hundreds for the existing capacity. Okay, well someday I'd like to know. Curious. Thank you.
I think it, I, it might have been on the slide, I'm not sure, but, um, I had a couple other questions unless there's others? Okay, um, just to be clear, and you talked about this in the context, you, you're, you know, referring to a few phrases that, just for the benefit of, we have some members of the public here, and there may be others watching at home. By right housing, you explained that as, with regard to SB nine as an example, as being fully ministerial. Can you explain what that, like, what does that mean vis-à-vis local control?
It doesn't necessarily mean fully ministerial, I can clarify that. By right housing just means that you don't need a use permit for it. So an example, right now in the downtown commercial zone, we do allow housing up to ten units per acre. The reason that we are rezoning within that is because no one's come forward with a project at ten units per acre. It doesn't pencil out for developers. But we do allow ten units per acre, but it has, someone who wants to propose a project under that paradigm has to say, I want a use permit for this. So by right just means that it is a use that is, that is built into the site. They don't have to ask for permission for housing, they just have to meet all of the standards that are, that are in play. The objective standards and ministerial processing, that is based more on having objective design standards rather than a route for discretionary review.
Okay, thank you. And there were two other questions I had. One was, can you just generally describe the community outreach that was done for this meeting?
For this meeting, the community outreach was done via a letter that went to all properties within three hundred feet of the sites. Letter that went to newspaper posting. And I, I think that was it, between here and the planning commission hearing, it was the newspaper posting as well as the letter. Prior to this and the planning commission hearing and the understanding that this would be coming forward to the city council, there had been outreach done during the summer via numerous email blasts and a series of what turned into three outreach opportunities where we set up and talked to residents about what was going to be happening. Most of the concerns that were raised during those timeframes were for the Miramonti site. So there were two days where we had presentations and presentation boards here and just talked to community members as they showed up, generally between eight and twelve people for each of those days. And then subsequently, I went and visited the Lavenita Lane and visited with some of the neighbors there to see what was going on during school drop-off hours and see the amount of parking coming in on the street. So that was with another group of neighbors, somewhere between eight and twelve people, just to get a sense of what's going on there, which helps inform staff for when we are talking to our consultants and trying to figure out what projects need to pencil, need to conform with all of those VMT requirements and VMD analysis and the subsequent requirements of that. So that's just going back to approximately May timeframe.
Thank you for that.
Mayor, before you get to your next question, if I answer Councilmember Riley's question?
Sure.
Forty-eight units.
Okay. Thank you.
And my, I guess my last question was similar, sort of, you, you talked about sort of the style guide, right? Which you described as sort of a non-regulatory thing that was included in the now-recended DPP. The, the now-recended DPP also included a policy statement and sort of, you know, visionary, but also policy statement related to the creek. And we did get a public comment on that. And so I would, could you address the written public comment we got on that? Insofar as if, if the city council wanted to consider adopting a policy relating to the creek similar to what was included in the DPP, could we do that apart from tonight's meeting? And what would that look like?
Yes, Mayor, we could in theory do that apart from looking at the creek. So I do want to highlight the fact that the, the DPP is, was itself a non-regulatory document. It was policy guidance, and the chapter for the creek in there was non-regulatory. It was basically highlighting possibilities for the creek and things that the community was interested in. And while we may not necessarily have those visions and guiding principles that were part of the DPP currently instated, it would be perfectly worthwhile to look at the DPP a little bit more wholesale and say, how do we divorce this from the idea? And I feel like this would be minor edits, how do we divorce this from the idea that the entirety of downtown is being rezoned under the DPP? And we could instate it as part of that process. I know that it's been raised that we could potentially be looking at this through revisiting Connect Arinda, since we're talking about civic spaces in that particular case. And as a part of a, an update to Connect Arinda, which is itself, was technically an appendix of the Downtown Precise Plan, we could look at everything that was written for the creek before and essentially pull that out and plug that into projects that we'd like to see pursued within Connect Arinda, or we can make it its own standalone effort at some point. But I do want to reiterate that the portions pertaining to the creek, with one exception, were non-regulatory, and it's not something that planning, planning staff is, just because it's not in a document that is currently certified or adopted, just because it's not in an adopted document doesn't mean that we are not concerning ourselves with the creek in the limited opportunities that we have to do so. So it is an effort that I certainly would like to see come back because I know that a lot of work went into that chapter and a lot of work went into just the overarching sentiment and things that the community feels needs to be done around the creek. I think that's, there's one more point than the regulatory portion of that. So there was a chapter within the objective design standards that was originally adopted in draft format that talked about civic spaces. Staff pulled that at this point, at this stage, because the, the issue with that was ultimately that civic spaces were being required as a part of any proposed development. And there are a lot of difficulties and hurdles to actually implementing that in an appropriate fashion. And that gets coupled with the fact that we don't have that visioning document that's been adopted. And those civic spaces that we're looking at are more of a, it's a network downtown vision. So we don't have any visions and guiding principles that can truly support how we want to see our civic spaces unfold. And so any standards related to if someone wanted to propose a civic space, there was a piece on the creek and how it would have to interface with the creek. Any, anything of that nature was pulled for this, but it is something that we have in our back pocket to potentially revisit as we look at, um, uh, any potential future for the Downtown Precise Plan or Connect Arinda and trying to figure out how those civic spaces should actually be re-implemented and then potentially re-adopted within the objective design standards.
Thank you, and I do want to also add thank you, as my colleagues have stated, for a very thorough presentation and a very, very thorough staff report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions, anyone? Yes, Councilmember Riley.
I don't know if this is a fair question, so if you can help. The Plan B that was eliminated, or the, our Appendix B that was eliminated may come back, and it's about different styles of architecture, is that what you said it was?
Yes, it is a.
Having multiple different.
Yes, Councilmember, so it's the design or the style guidelines. The only, the only thing that was in it this time was Mediterranean style. So if we had made that regulatory, then any developer that comes to us has to develop a building that adheres to the Mediterranean style that was proposed. My understanding, um, when we were originally going through this process was that Arinda had originally considered additional style guidelines, but ultimately did not proceed with getting all of them in place by the consultant at the time, which left us in a position where we wanted to just say, we can put this here as something to maybe aspire to, but it's non-regulatory because we can't, um, you know, when we did outreach at the very beginning of Plan Arinda and said, what kind of buildings would you like to see in downtown Arinda? There were a lot of suggestions that we're pulling from buildings in the local area that were not in that style. So, so yes, we would have to come back forward and consider multiple styles in order to make it a little bit more of a fair shape.
Okay, so if we adopt this tonight, what, or tonight, in the, you know, near future, something like this, what architectural style applies? Before we get to Appendix B, is, is it Mediterranean or is it nothing?
There is no architectural style that applies, there are simply ways of controlling the types of features, so.
Okay, so no, no terminology called architectural style?
Correct, no specific architectural style is called out.
Okay. And, um, okay, all right. And we're going to deal with that in this term, or?
I would suggest if the council wants to discuss that under the deliberations, when you're having your deliberations tonight, and give us direction, that would be an appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? From staff? Okay. In that case, I would like to open, um, public comment on our public hearing. And I know I have a couple cards here. And so this is the time for any members of the public who have public comment on item E, which is our housing element implementation, to provide public comment. I will note for the record that we got quite a bit of written public comment that has been provided to all of us. And we have all read it, and I want to thank the members of the public who did take the time out of your days, busy days, to provide us all with that public comment. It's very important to us. And that is all collected and made available to the public, and I believe there's packets, some packets in the back of that for anyone who would like to see it. I have a speaker card from David Turner.
Yes, I'd like to begin by saying, the acoustics in here are difficult. But when each of you pull the microphone towards you, I can hear you. But when I, when you're away from it, it's hard to make it out, I make out half the words. My first concern here, and I did submit a letter about this, is the preponderance of these sites on Maraga Way. Maraga Way is our most stressed road in Arinda. It is constantly difficult to get onto Maraga Way from both the west side and the east side. And both, and many residences and cars have to enter that car, that road all the time. My, my guess, my first question is, does MOFD, the Maraga Arinda Fire Department, have they approved all of this? Is this, is, are they part of this process? Because I think this has definite ramifications on our ability to evacuate the south end of Arinda if all of these new residences are built and added to the population that's already there. And I'm just wondering, does MFOF, MOFD, are they part of this process? Can someone tell me, is that, do they make a, do they approve these plans? I, I'm not sure how that works.
So at this point, we just take public comment, we can't necessarily respond to it?
Okay. Okay, well, that's my concern.
But we do want to hear your consent, so please continue.
So, um, three of these sites are within a thousand feet of each other. St. Mark's Church, the Shepherd of the Valley, and the third site up about another block. Between Hall Drive and Gorieta would be seriously impacted by all these new cars entering the road in that area. And coincidentally, Firehouse Number Forty-four is located right in the middle of that. And again, my concern is, if we have a wildfire, and hopefully we never will, but we all saw what happened in Los Angeles, and we're all quite aware of the dangers that can exist if we don't have good evacuation routes. I can remember seeing people evacuating their cars and just walking on the road because they couldn't get out. I can imagine how crowded Maraga Way would be if we had a major wildfire and how difficult it would be for thousands of people to get out. I'm not asking, I, I believe in the idea of adding this housing, I'm not against that. But I guess one of, is that the end, or?
It is, if you could just include your thoughts.
Okay, I'll try to wind up. I guess the other concern I have is, why are all these housing sites on the south side of Arinda? I know that downtown side is having a lot, but there's area down by Wagner Ranch and on the damn road that is an area that could be considered as well. I just think that, I'm hoping that there'll be some consideration for lowering the number of sites on, that are, that are impacting Maraga Way. I think it's an issue.
Thank you very much, thank you for speaking. The next speaker card we have is from Jeff Bloom, or Blum, I'm sorry.
Councilmembers, thank you, it was a great presentation. I learned a lot more than I ever could have reading through all that stuff, so I really do appreciate that. I'm here to just point out a couple of things, as I was walking down, I, I walked through Arinda a lot, and I was walking down Arinda Way, um, you know, by the old fairs area, and I saw another broken window from a golf ball. And we all know that we moved the farmer's market, what was it, back in two thousand and five, to a different location because somebody was injured again, large lawsuit, et cetera. But the country club has done nothing to mitigate that. Now we're putting a housing element in there, and we really like a lot of traffic, foot traffic, that, that's what this is all about. And the opportunity for a golf ball to hit somebody again and do some serious damage, and I don't think the attorney that's going to be seeing that is going to go for eighty thousand dollar settlement. I think it's going to go big, and if we as a city don't at least, if we haven't already strongly worded something to the country club to be responsible and put up some netting or higher fences or something to mitigate those golf balls from coming in these areas where there's housing. And then that way, if somebody comes after somebody and the country club doesn't do it, at least the city's protected and my tax dollars are protected. So that was the main reason for coming this evening. I am concerned with what Councilwoman Riley was mentioning about the overall architectural style because I was in Walnut Creek today and looking at those buildings, and I don't like the way those things look. It's steely, straight-up type things. I know that we, you know, can have a very type of style like we might have over in Theater Square with different types of buildings, but I think style. Square with different types of buildings, but I think style is important. And parking, as always, is a concern, especially for loading. I mean, that's one thing we see a lot. I mean, I don't know if you all know, but the Starbucks over by Safeway, there's a big semi truck that comes in at night. Unfortunately, it depends on the driver as to where he is, where he does loading. So we need to make, you know, allocations for things like that. Even though this is housing, we need to be able to make it easy for people to load and park and, you know, handicap and things like that, if possible. I know that, again, these regulations are written so that it's a commute-type thing. But anyway, thank you, and it was a very good presentation. I feel a lot more informed, and I really liked a lot of the questions the council members asked. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Again, very appreciated. Next, we have Reed, I think it's Robertson, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Uh, no, you, you got it right. Yeah. I, I actually would compliment Darren. I kind of pity him, actually. I've dealt with HCD. I, you know, personally have been victimized by them. I, I think they're kind of a rogue agency. But it's time for another thing. I resent that they're, I don't know if you'd word, use the word bludgeon people to, to build housing. I would give you guys some, a couple of facts. I would maybe keep an eye on the Lennar condos that are being built where Old Celia's was. I was actually driving down Mount Diablo this morning on my way to work. I don't know, you know, what they're going to sell for, if it's even economically feasible for them to build those. You know, I keep hearing that it's $800 to a million per affordable housing unit, and there's apartments, you can buy them for $50,000. An apartment in Oakland, they, that 1910 North Main Street was being, got seized by UBS for an $80 million loan two years ago. That's 120 units, brand new. So it's, it's actually cheaper to buy foreclosed apartments than it is to build them. So that's like the practical. I mean, what I also heard Darren say was that there's nobody has approached for, to build anything. I, I've lived here really my whole life, and it, the only thing I can remember being built was Theater Square, which I was surprised didn't go into foreclosure three months ago. I kind of saw that article in the Arinda News and was sort of shocked. I, I know they have a $22 million loan that came due. And honestly, I'm in the real estate business. It's not, it's not worth that much. I, I don't know how they renegotiated that loan. But on top of that, I, I know I reached out to some of you guys. I actually own the building across from the theater. I'm gonna, if you guys do this, I'll build you guys some apartments by converting some office space and garages that are really, at this point, wasted space to apartments for downtown. I believe I have the know-how to do it. I won't use any union labor, so it won't cost me a million dollars. Not that I would have that per apartment. I can't do that. So, anyway, but I know, Darlene, I, I saw you last year with David Biggs at Casa. So I know you, I was sitting at the table next to you by the fireplace. But anyway, anyway, that's my, my comment.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Do we have any other, I know there's other members of the public here. Would any of you like to provide public comment? Okay, yes. If you could just wait till you come up to the podium, come up to the podium, please, just so we can hear you and identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Maria Brundle, Arinda resident. I have a quick question. Oh, well, I'm not allowed to ask questions.
You, you can, you can make a comment and you can ask your questions in the comment. We can't respond to them right now.
It's a comment about the rezoning and also these zones that define the density of housing in the village part where Safeway is. And I was wondering if this is a final density plan for the village area, and I'm somewhat concerned about how the density has been planned out. Basically, that would be my comment, since I can ask a question.
You, you can, you can pose a question. We just can't respond at this time.
Okay, that's, that's all right. I am concerned about this, what we could call a pie shape, at the corner of Camino Pablo and Arinda Way. Because it seems a fairly small area, and it has basically the highest density unit of the whole village. I find it strange, and I'm wondering why the high-density unit wouldn't be kind of more central in the village, where we have a lot of space to, how can I say, mitigate the effect of having a tall building? We're concerned about walls. I'm not entirely certain what went into this, the decision of placing very high-density unit in this small corner there. I think it will be kind of, kind of in-your-face construction or whatever. So that's just my comment. I'm all for the rezoning, and I'm very supportive of putting more housing units in the village and revitalizing the area. So thank you all for your great work. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, any other public comment? I see one more.
Hello, City Council. Thank you so much for holding this very important meeting and for allowing public comment. And thank you to everyone who also contributed to the comments tonight. I'd like to also echo what Maria had just said, too. It was really surprising to me to see a high density in that far corner, as well as kind of along that line of the creek. And I, I'm just going to ask this question. I know you can't respond, but to really, to everyone here and to everyone who's in the audience now on Zoom, I'd like to ask you this question to ask yourself. Imagine a scenario, God forbid, where we have an inferno like Palisades had. Where we have cars on Camino Pablo trying to get access to Highway 24 to get out, and also from the other side, too. Having a high density along this line, and then really not including anything about creek restoration, the creek could potentially serve as an evacuation route, should people be stuck in their cars, have to open up their door, and run like hell for their lives. I'd like everyone to think about, what does that creek mean to you? And if you act quickly and consider a natural integration with the creek, with their density plan and rezoning, would you be able to save a life? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave, could we just get your name?
Bianca Garthie.
Thank you, Bianca. Thank you for coming. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this meeting. And at this point, that will bring the matters back to the council for deliberation. So I will recuse myself and leave the room and turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
May I ask how we should reach you when we're done deliberating? Can I text you?
Sure.
Will you just be in the next room?
I will be in the back when the door closed. Give me one.
Very important first question. Where are you?
Thank you.
And since we are bringing you back for deliberation, I'll ask if anybody would like to lead the discussion. Councilmember Hoxey, you look like you're holding your hand up.
I wasn't, Vice Mayor Iverson, but I'm happy to start the discussion. I hear, you know, loud and clear everybody's concerns regarding evacuation and traffic on Maraga Way, traffic near the high school. We also have concerns about Maraga residents evacuating down Maraga Way. I mean, there, there are a lot of concerns there. But these units have already been planned as part of what we approved in our EIR. And so I feel like we've already started to address the mitigation efforts as to what we can and should do to make sure that everyone can evacuate. That's why we bought the Ladris software, so that we can model different evacuation scenarios. And I also think that if a church were to develop more senior housing, like the Arinda Community Church has done, those residents tend not to have as many cars. I, I know we would need to actually show that, but that would require a different evacuation planning as to how we would evacuate seniors who don't have their own car to get out. But I, I feel like we've been going over this ground now in different ways for quite, quite some time. And as uncomfortable as it feels to suggest that there could be more housing out Maraga Way, for so many different reasons, I feel like it's the right thing to do to move forward with this rezoning. Rezoning is not building. And as they said, there's no, we've, we've received no inquiries. Connie's High School has not notified us they have any interest in, in building teacher housing. I mean, it, it seems like going ahead and rezoning is a whole different question than actually having a lot of new units being built there tomorrow.
Thank you. You, you were done, Councilmember Hoxey?
Done. Thank you.
Okay. I'm great. I, again, I'd like to thank our staff and our consultant team and all of our members of the public that have contributed so much over the last few years. This is not just a, a one-meeting event. We have been at this for a very long time. And I think, I think all of us take very seriously and understand a lot about all of the different concerns and the combined pressures of everything that we're facing in our community, as are all of our neighboring communities. The, the tensions between what the state wants to accomplish and what most communities want to accomplish in terms of state control versus local control has been a very, very challenging puzzle in recent years. And we have a lot of, a lot of considerations and all of the concerns that have been brought up by wildfire, about wildfire, is something that we certainly think about every single day and have put in enormous amounts of effort into. So what, you know, one thing that, that, that we did speak about tonight that often escapes, you know, understanding, and understandably so in the community, the, the state laws are so complex and so many these days, that it is very hard to stay on top of them, even for us who get exposed to them a lot. So trying to understand that the state has already provided provisions for development in a lot of these areas that we couldn't stop, even if we wanted to, is just important to know, because moving forward with our rezoning also helps protect our community. We don't want to, we, we may have a lot of concerns and tensions with all of the state laws, but we, but we also don't want to put ourselves at the mercy of being out of compliance with the state laws, which can unleash a whole host of undesirable consequences on us, many of which could be even worse than, you know, planning for the things that we have tried to plan for in a good way. So I, I'm very supportive of moving forward. I know how we, much effort we've put in this. I think in the area of the objective design standards, I very much, and I gather that my colleagues would very much like to see staff come back with multiple options for, you know, sort of the character. I mean, we're, we're trying to accommodate so many things, but I think, you know, we, like, like all communities, we have the whole bell curve of people, all the way from people who don't want anything to happen to people who would really appreciate and enjoy a lot of new development. We don't know what we're going to get in that spectrum, and we don't control it all. Rezoning does not result in, for sure, anything is going to happen. The private sector and the development interests also have to be able to, you know, be a very, you know, critical party to whether anything moves forward. But I would like to see that we, you know, have the opportunity to, you know, maybe welcome a little bit of diversity in, in the objective design standards styles, to the sense that, because as a community, I, I, I am an engineer, not an architect, but I don't think I would describe Arinda as having a consistent style throughout the, the community. So I think, you know, our ability to allow some diversity of, you know, approach would be good. So, but I, other than that, I'm, you know, I feel very positive that we have, you know, been very good at looking at everything that we can, even with all of the constraints that even HCD has put on us. All of our discussions about the Caltrans site, about the Bart site, we, you know, we, we're taking all of that into consideration for the long haul. But for the moment, I think, you know, staying in compliance, moving forward with this rezoning is really important to protect us overall from any of the issues that are going to come up if we fall out of compliance. So I'm very positive about moving forward.
Vice Mayor, before we move on to the next comment, I just want to note, the comments about the objective design standards, I assume they're more universal, but specifically tonight, we're only talking about the downtown design standards. And I know that the mayor would probably want to participate in that. So if you have other comments around that, if we can hold those for deliberations when she's back in the room.
I was going to say that if you don't, that was a lot to say about it, but I do hope you don't mind repeating some of that for her benefit. Councilmember Riley?
I feel very similar, I have very similar feelings and perspective as my council, fellow councilmembers. I am, you know, longtime resident, personally very concerned about evacuation for everyone on Maraga Way. We're only talking, and I guess at the Caltrans site, we're talking about Maraga Way and 24. And I think we've, we've, we've really dug in this for so long and so deeply that we know in our heart that we'd, we really have to go forward with this. It's, you know, it, it, in, at one level, it makes no sense to do this, but we really have to, otherwise the penalties are so great. I don't, I don't know that we could, you know, handle more lawsuits and more, or the lack of grants and the lack of resources and just being kicked so far down. And that builder's remedy, I mean, I don't even understand that, but I know that's a really nasty thing. And it's something we don't want. So we're being forced, in a lot of ways, to go forward with this. And to me, it's like being in, in a rock and a hard place. I mean, neither is all that great. But we've done the best we can, and we're at a place where we need to move forward and keep fine-tuning and talking about other things to make sure that what we end up with is a very nice addition to our lovely town.
You've all articulated so many of the things that I wanted to say. I just wanted to address a few specific points that I felt, I just wanted to surface a little bit. You know, the one thing that, that I could just feel the frustration in a lot of the letters we got is people saying, you know, we've been making these comments for years, and you're just not listening. You haven't changed anything about these opportunity sites. And these non-downtown sites are what we are here to talk about tonight. I really appreciated that side of the presentation on affirmatively furthering fair housing and why it is that we could not have an approved housing element unless we put the housing on these opportunity sites. It's something that no matter how many times we try, you know, it feels very defensive to say that, but it's the truth. It was a requirement of the whole housing element checklist to get arena numbers, to not put them all in one place, and that the public policy makes sense, right? You don't want to have the good part of town and the bad part of town, where there's one cluster with all the dense affordable stuff in a one-block area, but Arinda's only got a block or two. And so to us, it felt very unnatural and frustrating. But I do understand why the policy's there. And if I could just shine a, you know, a good light on what we're doing with these opportunity sites, frequently what you'll see is that churches or public agencies feel that they have a mandate to build affordable housing, to do something for seniors, or for teachers, or workforce housing. And sometimes, they're not maximizing the profit on their land. And so the hope is that maybe some of those could be good, bite-sized, affordable, nice projects. And the density of 20, 25 units to the acre is not studio apartments and high-rises, it's townhomes. And so should a project proceed, you actually might find you like it, and it's going to be what it's going to be. it's going to be what it's going to be. The mitigation measures slide, I just really appreciated some of the newer things that have come in. One is the wanting, if we can, to broaden Moraga Way with grants, but to maybe add a bike lane or a pedestrian lane that could be an emergency evacuation lane. For people hearing that for the first time, it's very long range. We don't have the money for it, but it would really be a good way. And the same with looking with our La Morinda partners at ways, maybe development impact fees, ways that we actually try to address the infrastructure constraints that scare everybody so much. So we don't have the money. The state's not giving us the money. They're just telling us to build housing and figure it out. But we're really working on it, and I hope you saw and heard that. It's early innings, but we hear you. And the last thing is nobody talked about the density bonus law tonight. And I just want to make sure for people who don't live in this world every day that there's the low side of the range, which was 99 units for the churches, and where's my cheat sheet, 187 for the Miramonde site. But then the high end of the range was maybe 124 and 234. Just because HCD didn't let us count the high end of the range for arena numbers, we are zoning to a range of densities. And if somebody comes in and builds affordable housing as a component of their project, they get waivers and concessions. That could be additional units. It could be additional height. It could be waivers on some of those objective design standards that we're seeing downtown. So setbacks or parking, you get one or two, depending on how much affordability you include. So Darren, your answer to somebody's question, you went right to talking about inclusionary housing. But those density bonus laws tell developers that if they include affordable housing in what they build, they get goodies for it. They get, they get things that make their project more financially feasible, more economically attractive. And what we're seeing a lot, at least in the Bay Area, is the vast majority of projects that come forward voluntarily include some affordability, not because it's forced on them, but because they want those incentives. And so I just didn't want to ignore the fact that all of that's also in the mix. And what we're zoning could be larger than these minimum numbers we cited. And we're eyes wide open. And again, it's going to be what it's going to be. But I just wanted to make sure that we're being very express about what we're doing. And with all of that yammering, I also support what is being proposed tonight and would like to make a motion that we bring this ordinance forward for adoption in a future meeting, if nobody else has anything else that they would like to add before we proceed. Please.
I could add this even after the motion. But one thing I do want to assure our residents is that even though we're talking a lot about the need to comply with the state requirements, we want to assure you that we fight very hard to balance all of these concerns and to balance our local control. I think one of the things that maybe hasn't been clear enough, that was a major victory, and we really need to thank our city manager and our staff and our consultants that we've pushed for. But some of you may have heard a lot of discussion about SB 79, which is currently on the governor's desk. But we could have potentially had as much as a seven-story building at the BART station had that moved forward and ultimately been passed in its original form. And we pushed very, very hard collectively, as well as with our neighbors in Lafayette and Moraga, to really, you know, help balance and protect the idea, all of our concerns about things like evacuation and too many residents with not enough services and infrastructure, et cetera. So I just want to, I just want all of our residents to know that we do continue to balance our fight for trying to make Arinda what Arindans would like to see versus what we, you know, are having to work with the state of California about. So we are feeling, I think, pretty strongly tonight that what is happening with this rezoning is a compliance that is the best thing for us in terms of moving forward. But we're certainly never giving up in terms of everything we can do to make sure that we continue to maintain as much local control as we can.
Thank you. I really appreciate that comment. Anybody else, anything?
I can second your motion.
Great.
I can second your motion. Also, do I need to spell it out more, or can we just go forward to a roll call vote?
Well, I think the motion is as recommended by staff and as it appears on the agenda to waive the full reading and introduce ordinance 2425-04, and also direct staff to bring back resolution 52-25A for adoption.
That was the motion, and I believe it is seconded. I'll go to a roll call vote. Councilmember Hoxsey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Iverson, I am also an aye. It passes unanimously. And with that, I'll go get the mayor. And Mayor Malkani, I'll just let you know that the ordinance and resolution recommendation passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. So that takes us to our deliberation of item E12 for the housing element sites within the downtown. And we're being asked to waive the full reading and introduce ordinance 25-05 and direct staff to bring resolution 5225B back for adoption. So with that, who wants to begin, or do you want me to chime in? Okay. I mean, as to the downtown sites, I think that I support the staff recommendation. I understand the need for concern. And I think, you know, there were some comments about especially high density in an area that I was hoping staff could maybe address during this deliberation, just in response to the public comment. But before doing that, maybe other folks have things to say?
I can talk a little bit about that because I was on the planning commission for so many terms during the formative phase. And so, correct me, but a lot of the placement of the densities and which sites were approved, as well as the densities per site, were an iterative process that largely involved the landowners. And because Darren mentioned in his presentation that what you saw in those, the downtown core 55 areas was adjacent parcels that could potentially be combined in the future. And so while if you look at the block on the map, it sort of looks like somebody's going to do a flatiron building there, that is not the case. It's that that whole set of sites, I believe, are something that have been, had the potential in the past to be combined. So it is that, and it is not a single site being zoned, but a cluster.
Okay. Thank you. And that was, that was part of the staff report. It was, it was that area as well as the Village.
There was a slide, the area that's currently the Bevmo was the other 55. So if you picture the Country Club Plaza and Fairs Building, that set of sites was 155. The Bevmo building is the other 55. Okay.
Yes.
Can I ask a question with relation to the 55 zoned areas?
Sure.
It's, I asked a little bit during the question period. I just have a, and Darren responded, well, we're used to seeing a building, you know, right on the street there. But I'm concerned because we're used to seeing a very low building right on the street there by Country Club Plaza. And so my concern is, I don't know if we're used to seeing a very tall building right on the street there, four or five stories, without any, I don't know if there's stepping back areas or anything in the design that would make it so it's not just a flat, you know, wall surface there right along the street that's four stories, five stories tall?
Yes, Councilmember, I can answer that. There are step backs required for all buildings above 35 feet. The step back is 10 feet. So essentially, if you get above 35 feet, you have to go back 10 feet. The only exception is for buildings that have mansard roofs, which are kind of a roof style that steps itself back for the duration of an upper level. But yes, we would generally hope and expect that anything that is being built up to the street is going to go up for maybe three stories and then have that required step back.
Okay, so that's, but currently, how tall, I should know this, it's a two-story building there now, right?
Yes, it is a two-story building there. I would have to estimate that at somewhere around 20, kind of low stories, probably 22 feet.
And is there a reason why we don't have the step back starting after two stories as opposed to after three?
I think if I had to guess, I don't have the actual reason here, but I'm just going to make the assumption that that would be two constraints on the proposed densities. That is something that HCD would probably look at a little bit less favorably to say you have to cut in by one story at least 10 feet for multiple stories rather than just for three stories and above. So yes, I believe ultimately if you build up two stories and you have to then cut back from that, especially at those 55 units per acre, you're probably introducing some constraints to actually being able to get 55 units per acre.
And was 55 units per acre the density that HCD suggested, or consultant, where does that come from?
There was, so during the last couple of months, there was a lot of back and forth between consultants, staff, planning commissioners, council members. There were multiple iterations. I know that under the EIR, I believe the downtown, for those particular types of sites were actually analyzed at something higher, like 85. So there was a consistent lowering as we were trying to dial in what numbers we were actually going to be producing, and a bit of back and forth that basically brought those levels down to what was going to be able to get the minimums required based off of the sites that we could count within our arena, because we couldn't count all sites. We can't just say we're going to rezone the entirety of downtown and we'll get credit for all that because we're not going to see development at a lot of those sites. They're just not feasible. So basically, there was a lot of fine tuning that went along and ultimately brought those numbers down to the number that would get us to just meet the threshold with a little bit of buffer per HCD's requirements. Those numbers weren't directly required of us by HCD. It's just what got us there.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt my fellow councilmembers' questions and discussions, so.
That's okay. You're not interrupting your virtual. But if I can just opine a little bit on the specific that Fairs and Country Club Plaza site is, in all of the studies that I've seen of that site, there's a lot of topography on it. There's a thing called Aldo's Hole, where it kind of falls downhill a little bit going towards Camino Pablo. So most of, I think, why they felt it could handle more density also is that it's got the ability to put a few stories farther away from Arinda Way. So I think most of the professional planners who looked at it would expect that a lot of the density would naturally be set further back. And in fact, when you hear about that horizontal mixed use, I think that site was one of the places they had envisioned being a good fit. Whereas the Bevmo site, it's flat, but it's not, it doesn't have that whatever, bucolic setting in the same way this site does. And I hear what you're saying about that, so.
Thank you. That helps.
Yeah, that's helpful for me. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, of course.
One other comment that we might just want to remind everybody of, when you look at all the sites, especially on the Village side, is that the transmission lines that we get very used to seeing and forgetting that they're there also have a bit impact on which sites can be used in certain ways. So, and the odds of those transmission lines ever being relocated or changed are low. So we get used to seeing them and forget that they're there, but they do have an impact on which sites are viable.
That is a really good point. And I've, you know, gone and, yeah, walking through those areas, though I know that we are, it doesn't stop us from continuing to try to get those transmissions lines relocated for various, various reasons. But it's just extremely expensive, and we have not yet convinced anyone to make that investment.
And I understand that they're actually high transmission lines. They're not, you know, that they'd be very expensive to dig the types of underground bunkers and things you would need to build that. It would not just be a conduit underground or something.
And the problem is for a lot of those sites, they just cut right in the middle of the sites, which just, as a physical space matter, limits what can be done. I mean, one of the things, a couple of things, I thought the public comment section today was real, both what we got in writing and also those who took the time to show up here had some really useful, insightful thoughts to share with us. And I was really appreciative for it all, between that and the questions that you all asked. Thank you. But I, two takeaways that I would love to see come back. I understand why they're not included in Westboro Forest for rezoning, but, and I think that makes sense and agree with it. But I would like to come back and look at the issues of, you know, creek preservation and use, as well as potentially architectural style. Though I'm glad we're not including a limiting for the downtown sites at least to, you know, only one architectural style because I've seen a lot of very attractive buildings that don't use just, I think it was Mediterranean style. And, you know, yeah, there were a few other, you know, comments that maybe were more specific, that I thought were also interesting in terms of the challenges with, on the Fairs side, and the golf ball. It is an ongoing issue. We heard about it recently from the Chamber of Commerce, folks who have businesses there. It's a good point. And, you know, I just wanted to note that while I sincerely hope that rezoning actually results in some genuine redevelopment, and if it passes ultimately, that it would result in some redevelopment of multi-use buildings, because I think that would really revitalize downtown. I think one of our public commentators talked about the challenges right now in this economy, that a lot of, a lot of projects simply aren't penciling out, right? And, but I think that this would be a good first step to move towards downtown revitalization. And it's a long time coming. And I'm really hap, I am very happy with the additional mitigation measures in the EIR and in general with Arinda's, Arinda's, I think, cutting-edge responses and approach towards wildfire mitigation and emergency preparedness that we're continuing to embrace. So I support this. Others?
I have two comments, one's a little longer, apologies. First of all, my quick one is the downtown precise plan was so many years in the making. It was so well thought through. It's exciting. It is exciting. And so while that is not on the table tonight, I look at these implementing ordinances on our housing element as really one piece of the puzzle. And I'm excited to see that vision document come back with the creek and the connector Arinda and a vision for Arinda not being the land that time forgot forever. And so this is a little bit out of context, but I am so excited to get the context wrapped back around what we're doing. So I look forward to those, this is the, you know, thanks a lot, what's next? We look forward to what's next. And I'll let you make some comments. Before we wrap up, I do have some specific comments about the architectural aspect of the design standard. All right. I would like to share some lessons learned from my time on planning and working with the Wilder Design Guideline book and the projects that came forward, because they, they made the Wilder Design Guidelines around, they went around Arinda and they had identified what they said were the six most common Arinda styles. And they had cottage style, and they had kind of a ranch style, and they had an art deco style. And then seeing Um, and then seeing how that got implemented in these large, beautiful custom homes, sometimes it worked and sometimes you got things that were called a cottage, but were like six thousand square feet. Um, and had a lot of stone going on. And so it doesn't or just because something's in Arinda now is not necessarily the best way to create your design guidelines. And when we looked at this issue as it came through planning in its formative stages, a lot of um, you know, our residents would come forward and say, well, it should be art deco because of the community center and the theater. And then somebody commented that art art deco done badly, and especially when it's objective design standards can be terrible. And modern is something that we've seen some beautiful ones of it wilder, but you know, if you don't like the stuff at Walnut Creek's modern done badly can be blocky. And so my uh and I and I've spent a long time looking at this. I've come full circle. And I actually think that the form-based design that's not trying to dictate this is your Mediterranean and this is your rancher and and to just let people come forward with their own architectural style, so long as our form-based objective design standards do all the massing articulations, setback windows, balconies. And I was very pleased with what we're looking at. So I I'm actually content and um would ask you to to just think a little bit about the other perspective on that style question.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. And it's not, I I guess my main point is I understand why it's not being proposed tonight. Right? As part of the rezoning, um whether it comes back to us or not, I I think after your comment, I'm I'm somewhat persuaded and have mixed feelings about it, but maybe I'd like to just know a little more. And then, you know, because I think that piece, we were simply providing sort of general direction to staff, right?
Yeah, I think the the objective there would be to let us know if there's an interest. And if there is, then we can kind of regroup internally and figure out how to come back to you and what that conversation looks like. And then you can spend more time on another night talking about whether or not you want to pursue that or not.
The the form-based aspects and the things that are already there become regulatory, right? Is it possible to have the, do the architectural styles, if they're added in any way, does that become regulatory or is that more guideline oriented?
In the form, um, also remember in the form that they were proposed, they were just guidelines. Um, same as what we see at Wilder. Um, the 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 standards that we have at Wilder are guidelines by and large. They're meant to be reviewed during a discretionary process. And so you get a lot more wiggle room out of that. Um, so if we were proposing style guidelines to come back, it would most likely be in a regulatory fashion where we try to fine tune exactly what constitutes a very specific style and how someone has to propose a um project and utilize a checklist to say, yes, this actually is working this, you're saying the style, and now you have this element, this element, this element. Um, so it would in theory be regulatory. It would in theory be something that is a little bit more objectively implemented than what we've got for an area like Wilder. Um, but to Vice Mayor's point, um, there is a, I mean, there is a worry that that regulation could potentially result in some bad styles or some um difficulties by staff to implement. We do have another staff member, um Christine Thompson, who has experience with this and has pointed to the form-based aspects as being generally very positive and easy to implement objectively. And the style-based to create a lot of confusion by staff and um by uh applicants, developers. So it is something to consider for the future, um and there are likely ways to make checklists that at least um offer some additional minor controls um and provide some rails, uh but that I think would be a different discussion.
Um, I I haven't spoken on this yet, and I I'd support this um second motion. And um I want to just ditto what I said before um about my concerns about evacuation. They still apply in the downtown area. Um, and again, I think we're doing the right thing going forward with this, but it has uh, you know, a lot of a lot of concerns for people. Um, on the design question or the architectural design issue, um, I'm not there yet to know uh what form versus style and um so I've gotten a little bit of a little little bit of a lesson right now and um I think there's a lot to learn and think about. It has it it to me, it's a huge, it can have a huge impact. You could have a, because what you talk about, well, I don't know if we want to talk about this, but it's making me want to talk about this, that um there's so much about a house that can be ugly, but then beautified by landscaping. You can make something ugly with something green. So um, I I don't want to just end the conversation with the the shape or the style of the architecture. So we'll get there and I definitely would like to uh have that happen in this year. Um, I'm very interested in us doing as much as we can to complete this. And I also really want to revisit the downtown plan. I think that that's a a high agenda item. Um. Yeah, you've done great work, and I know you're working so hard, but it would be so great to keep um this momentum going. Wrap it up.
Great. I would just, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hoxsey.
Uh, I was just gonna make a couple of comments. One on the design question, I had an interesting conversation with uh City Manager Smith about um Carmel by the Sea as being, you know, a lovely cute area. What if, you know, the Arinda Country Club area looked like that, you know, uh on Arinda Way? And we looked it up and there were at least six different design elements in that one area, which made me realize it's really not a simple question to figure out what design standards we want, even if we said we want downtown Arinda to look like Carmel. There would be a lot to to make that happen uh as far as picking different design standards and what that would look like. So I would be interested in having a discussion amongst all of us about what we want Arinda to look like, but I'm not sure whether we want to implement that in regulatory design standards. And I'd need more information to understand that. Um, I am very interested in the creek. And um I I liked a lot of the elements that were in the Downtown Precise Plan and the Connect Arinda. And I think we should go back and have uh bring those elements forward again and and have more discussion about them. And I want to assure the residents of Arinda that we're not ignoring them by approving these zoning regulations, zoning uh that we're just um going to discuss those other items at a later date. But otherwise, I'm I'm in favor of moving forward with the rezoning. And I feel like it would be very exciting to see more new things happening in downtown Arinda.
I with regard um I would like to see sort of the form-based versus style-based, whether it should be regulatory versus visionary come back on a really high, high level, three sixty level first before we get into the nitty gritty. Just because I need more education on it as we have this discussion is what I'm realizing. Um, also would love to see, um, you know, I do think the Downtown Precise Plan was a fabulous visionary document that a lot of work went into. And I would like to see it come back um for uh consideration of the chapter about the creek and the connect Arinda and and, you know, other potential rezoning, but keeping in mind the, you know, um the mitigation, additional mitigation um issues that we have looked at, right? And um, you know, thank you for for bringing that up. And it it is of the concern about evacuation, emergency preparedness will never go away here, unfortunately. Um, it's always going to be top of mind. It is top of mind. I can, you know, reassure you that um to myself as well, it's top of mind as a resident, um as as a representative. And I do think to those who are concerned, I would urge you to look at the mitigation measures in our EIR and you know, or or ask us about them, because there really are some incredible things that we're trying to do. We can't guarantee safety, but we certainly are doing our best to put, to make us in the in the best position possible, right, in the event of evacuation. And I think that um, you know, looking at the software we're using and some of the other um uh the the planning, the training, um, the infrastructure changes. We'd like to see the additional lane on Maraga Way that we're trying to get a feasibility study for and pursue grant funding for all of this is really, really important work. And it's it's not that we don't have a long ways to go, but we have really come so far. Um, and I'm I'm grateful for our revised EIR for that. And I want to thank staff and and um, you know, everyone who was involved with doing that. Any other thoughts for deliberation? Okay. In in that case, do we have um, or I'll move for the um to waive the full reading and introduce Ordinance twenty five zero five and direct staff to bring Resolution fifty two twenty five B back for adoption.
One clarification, there was an amendment to Ordinance twenty five zero five presented by staff in the late correspondence. So the motion should be to the ordinance as amended.
Okay, and I will uh make the motion then as to the ordinance as amended, twenty five oh five. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And now I will ask the um deputy, city deputy clerk to conduct the roll call. Councilmember G?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoxsey?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Iverson?
Aye.
And Mayor McCauley?
Aye.
Okay, and that passes unanimously.
Um, Mayor, before we move on, can I just make a couple? First, I just want to say thank you to the City Council uh for your time and effort. I've been here almost a year now, and I've spent most of my time talking about this particular topic. And it's very um, it's very nice to get to this stage where we can start pivoting and talking about the things that I think while this is very important, talking about the things about advancing uh the community in ways that everybody would like to see. And I think we welcome the opportunity to talk to you more about architectural styles. We welcome the opportunity to talk to you more about the Downtown Precise Plan and what what you want to keep moving forward with respect to that. And I especially just want to thank Darren and LaShawn and OSA. This team worked incredibly hard to get to this point. Uh, lots of conversations, um debates and disagreements, but we got to this space to try to bring you as concise and easy to understand, uh because this is a very complex topic for both elected officials and for the public. And so I just want to say that publicly how much I appreciate the effort that staff put into making this work. And my involvement over the last year has only um daylighted how much goes into trying to make things sound simple when they're not.
Thank you. And I think you you heard from all of us on the council, as well as many members of the public, how appreciative we were for a very thorough descriptive um report tonight that I think really helped ease understanding and answer questions and um was very transparent. So thank you for all of that. And with that, I want to move us to council member reports. Um, and I I have a few, but I was gonna start and let others others chime in. And there's if if you could go on the ones we had together, too.
Yeah, I'll I'll let the mayor add additional comments, but we had in um our infrastructure subcommittee meeting last week. Um, and the key topics were uh we had our consultant there to review a questionnaire that we had um ask um our residents that live on private roads um to um offer up their comments about some of their thoughts about um what they think should be done, what they're concerned about. Um, and some of the things that they would like to see happen. So that was um, and we had nearly five hundred respondents. So that helps provide us with more data as we look to move forward and try um in the future to look at options, um, you know, relative to our entire community. Um, staff also gave us an update on the storm um drain mapping, which is going well and appears to be pretty much on schedule that sometime in the spring, we'll probably be able to um review a much more comprehensive mapping of the community than we've ever had before. So I'm looking at Siva. I'm hoping I'm uh getting that that correct. And uh we also then discussed uh and took public comment about um the the future of the infrastructure subcommittee, things that we're going to need to bring back to share with the full council. And um, you know, topics that still fit within the work plan that was approved. And um, and whether there are any other agenda items still to be looked at. So those were the main topics. Um, and as usual, we had a a pretty good uh public participation. I'll I'll let the mayor add anything else.
No, I think you covered it really well, Councilmember. Um, you know, that we, there were some slides that were presented about the results of the survey at the next infrastructure meeting we're going to. Because we all, we were all receiving the information at the same time as the public. So I think those slides were were forwarded to the council and certainly are are made available to the public. Um, and um, so I think we all wanted some time to sort of consider it and process it. And we were going to discuss it again at our next infrastructure meeting. There was a lot of public comment. One thing that was very interesting to me was that um while there was a very large uh percentage that, of course, you know, somewhat somewhat uh anticipated response would would love, you know, public ownership and maintenance of all the currently privately maintained roads. There were also a few, um, there was, there was a a cross section that that was more concerned with um or that was favored and and was concerned about public maintenance of roads as distinct from ownership. So that was an interesting dynamic, but go go look at it. I thought they did a pretty good on the response rate, right, which was, it was um it was um just under five hundred out of about um sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred, right? Uh, so I'm looking at also our city engineer in the audience. So um, yeah, it was really interesting. Um, and then the other things I wanted to comment on were um, and I don't know, Councilmember uh Hoxsey, you went on this as well. I have other things to report on. So do you want to report on the East Bay Mud? Oh, no, you didn't do that. I'm sorry. You, I thought you were going to, but the um Councilmember G, do you want to talk about the East Bay Mud Water Treatment Plant Tour?
Yeah, I'm ha- I'm happy to. And then I know staff could add uh more as well as uh the mayor and the city manager joined us for a while. Uh, East Bay Mud was very uh thoughtful in uh inviting uh public officials um to come uh visit the construction that's going on here in Arinda at the water treatment plant, which um most people, again, drive by and and it runs into the background if you live here and you don't think a whole lot about it. But it's an amazing facility in what I consider to be a fabulously amazing location for what it is. How um but the uh, um, you have to be kind of an engineering geek to appreciate some of the parts about it. But East Bay Mud system, that's basically um, you know, all a gravity system where it's flowing all the way downhill from uh um the Sierras all the way to the other side of the hills here in the Bay Area is a is a phenomenal engineering feat. But what they're doing, it's it's a huge investment. It's East Bay Mud's biggest capital project ever, which is kind of amazing when you think it's here in Little Arinda, but it's uh, it's uh going to add multiple new processes to help keep our water supply in, you know, the safest um uh best way possible. Um, given all the changes that are going on with climate and everything else. So it's a, it was a fabulous project. It's not going to be completely done until twenty twenty seven, but um it was a great opportunity. Uh, um, a number of officials, uh the mayor of Maraga joined us. Um, one of the bar directors joined us, some people from Central San. Um, there were, there it that was a good turnout in terms of uh, and East Bay Mud, I thought, did a spectacular job of um bringing um their general manager was there, Marguerite Young, our board director, who's also the board president was there, and they had an enormous uh uh cadre of their staff that are involved in both the operation of the plant and the construction. So I thought it was a wonderful tour and an awful lot of explanation about what goes on there that uh, you know, all the people living around there have no idea, but uh But they, the plant processes about 120 million gallons of water a day. So it's a lot, a lot of throughput and, and going from there over to our friends on the other side of the hills as well, probably our city attorney.
Yeah, I think you, I figured you'd have the technical expertise to explain some of that better than I. But the gravity, though, was, I did, I did process that, and it was incredibly amazing how they do this. And it really was, you know, there's nothing like a show and tell within a big project like that. The only other thing I wanted to add is there were quite a few questions, because also Mike Romer and Steve Danziger, our MOFD directors, were also there. And between them and Councilmember G and I and our city manager, we had quite a few questions about wildfire prevention and emergency preparedness and were reassured in part that, about a few things. One is that in the event of, you know, they do have generators and backup that would allow, allow them to operate and provide water in the event of a shutdown of power outage. The system was built, as I, and city manager and Councilmember G, correct me if you understood differently, but the city, the system was set up to withstand a, up to a 7.0 earthquake, which is another question that is relevant in light of what we all experienced the other morning. And the other thing is, in the, there was a bit of discussion about water pressure and water hydrants. And while the hydrant current, hydrant system is admittedly somewhat designed for house fires as opposed to mega fires, there is a, you know, sort of plan that CAL FIRE would be able to dip into the reservoirs with aerial equipment. So as long as planes can fly, we have some, we're really lucky that we do have some large, large reservoirs and available water sources near us, which was reassuring. Anything else to add on that, or?
No, I think you all covered it. It was just a really interesting to see this very old facility, which ultimately has all this new technology going in and understanding how the gravity system works. And of course, that was new information for me.
I think one of the things I get the biggest kick out of is how beautiful it was done architecturally. When you think of what would be done today, you know, no one would think of, you know, creating all of that style. So in terms of architectural style components, I have to admit, it's a, it's a fascinating facility from that standpoint of being such an engineering facility. And, but then it has all these architectural flourishes and historical things, so.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, another thing, I, I had other things I wanted to update on as well. But do other councilmembers have reports? No? Okay. We had, just last week, we, the Arinda Chamber of Commerce co-hosted a coffee with the mayor. We've been really fortunate this year. We've had two of those. And then we had a coffee with the chief as well, with our police chief. And so the chamber's been great. I hope they continue those events. And the discussion touched on a few issues, you know, supporting our downtown and local businesses, city priorities in housing. We informed them of the tonight's meeting. You know, community life and economic vitality. And I'll, I won't get into the details because some of this may come from our city manager and her report. And then we talked about public safety and preparedness. There are a few upcoming events with the chamber. And there is a Chamber Ice Cream Social at Lord's, October 9th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And then there is another event coming up. There's going to be a holiday party, and I don't know if I have the date written down. Oh, Thursday, there's going, Thursday in early November, December 5th? That might be the date for the holiday party. Okay. And as we get more information, we'll make sure that gets sent out. And then the last two things I just wanted to briefly mention are the mayors from Maraga, Arinda and Lafayette have continued to meet monthly now. We're doing this on a regular basis. I think it's really, really helpful and also hope that continues. And, you know, a lot of the discussions have focused on wildfire prevention. In some cases, when our neighboring jurisdictions say we should do this, I've said, we are doing that. Let's, we'll send you info. So, but we're collaborating on a lot of regional issues and just, I think just having the monthly meetings and the regular communication is really helpful. Of course, anything that is designed or desired would be brought back to you, to all of us to the extent it's policy. But, and then lastly, I just wanted to say, I was really, really, really feel blessed that I was able to go visit our sister city for their annual meetings and went to Tabor. And it was really one of the sort of highlights, I think, of any visit I've ever been on and that it was just wonderful to be there as part of this international delegation with other, they call them twining cities in, in Europe from around the globe. And I know that Councilmember Hoxsey has been there before, and Councilmember G went last year as mayor. And it, it was really amazing. I don't know how to describe it except for it was like, you know, we, we were dressed in costume, we represented Arinda, we, we walked in the parade. Endless thanks to Slavka and Bobby Landers and everyone involved with our Sister City Committee, because without them, this, this would not happen. And our, you know, the Sister City clubs are what keep that relationship so rich and so constant. You need the constant friendship. But at a time when so many people were talking about division in this world and in this country, it was so wonderful to be there, exploring friendship and common understanding. And, you know, I had conversations with a vice mayor from Poland in broken English and said, what is your number one issue? And listen to this, Councilmember G, he said, roads. And I said, that's a big issue for us, too. And, you know, talked to council, councilors from Constance, Germany, another sister city of Tabor, about women in politics and, you know, in local politics. And, you know, and then we had different issues, right? Whereas some, there were countries there that bordered Ukraine, and they have huge concerns about a war spreading to their country. And, you know, and then from California and Arinda, I talked a lot about wildfire prevention and emergency preparedness. And a lot of them were, you know, very curious about that. So it was really some sharing. I tried to encourage the mayor of Tabor to come visit us, and he might. And there was huge appreciation for Councilmember Hoxsey and others who have hosted exchange students. And a bunch of them came and, and, including Honza, who says hi. Anyway, it was a wonderful trip, and I'm just really grateful that we have this relationship with Tabor. It's, it's truly, truly wonderful thing.
It is. It's an amazing, it's an amazing relationship. And I encourage everyone to think about hosting a student. It's a wonderful experience.
Okay. Thank you. And then I didn't know, I know, just for a couple more minutes, I don't know if we, if you wanted to talk about CCTA at all, Councilmember G?
Actually, I did. I wanted to mention, I, I will keep this very brief, but I was able to travel to Washington, D.C. in September with the senior leadership from CCTA. And we, we were visiting both with DOT staff and also we were able to spend a full hour, which I thought was incredibly generous. We were able to spend a full hour with Congressman De Solney and a full hour with Congressman Garimendi. So it was very worthwhile in that sense. And we were able to get a, a very good sense as well as get a very good conversation with both congressmen in terms of the transportation funding situation, the reauthorization that's going to have to be coming up and, and just overall priorities. And, you know, even though California and the current administration may not always be perfectly aligned, we found a great deal of good conversation with Department of Transportation staff and did, it was a very worthwhile trip, I think, in terms of, you know, helping to further our message, especially to our congresspeople in terms of, you know, what we would like to see in the transportation area. So it was a very positive trip.
Thank you for that. And then the last thing, Vice Mayor, did you want to talk about the town hall or?
It just reminded me that, yeah, Congressman De Solney came here and spent an hour on his Saturday doing an entire town hall at Miramonde about fire prevention and preparedness. And he had the fire chiefs from MOFD and from Cal, is it CONFIRE? Thank you. I'm like, and it was, it was really informative. I think the, the only thing that was a shame is that the people who came on a Saturday morning were the people who already were, I think, are some of our leaders in terms, you know, Mark Evans was there and a lot of people who are in Firewise leadership. And so it wasn't the people hearing it for the first time. But it was wonderful to hear the alignment on the need for funding for people who don't know how they're going to pay for all of this home hardening, the need for, you know, people to get ready. And so I, it was just nice to hear sort of this, this really top-to-bottom alignment on what we need to do in terms of preparedness.
Thank you. Any other councilmember reports? I know we had a lot, but we had a, we've had a break in meetings, so. Okay, then we'll move to the city manager.
Thank you. Just let the council know that the League of California Cities Annual Conference is next week. And at the next meeting, we'll be bringing back the voting members for that a little later than deadline. But we've been told that we'll get it in under the wire to get the voting members established for the league next week. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community, public comment and, and individual conversations that e-bikes are a huge topic in this community. Just wanted to let you know that discussions are happening behind the scenes, both with other jurisdictions and lessons learned and trying to learn what other people are up to. And then also with the school district, we'll be having the Arinda Union School District, we'll be having a meeting. I'll be back in front of the council at some later date with an informational report on where we're at with some of the learnings that we've received from talking to all the other various stakeholders who also have an interest in finding solutions for e-bike issues. Letters of support and opposition for pieces of legislation. There's, we've sent our letters to the governor. So they're sitting on his desk, asking him to sign a few, asking him to oppose a few. DowntownArinda.com will be set to launch mid-October. And as the mayor mentioned previously, there's a lot of efforts the chamber has ongoing. One of those efforts is a restaurant week. So we'll be looking to couple the launch of Downtown Arinda with the chamber's Restaurant Week campaign. And legislative advocacy is kicking into high gear. And as the mayor mentioned, she's been meeting more regularly with the other mayors. City managers have now met with Townsend to talk about the framework and will be meeting with the mayors mid-October to go over that framework and then bring that back to the respective councils for adoption of a regional legislative framework. And then I know that they didn't speak about it during council member reports, but the AdHoc Sign Committee has been very active, narrowing down items, meeting with potential sign companies. And I think we're almost there. So I think we'll be prepared to come back to the city council, making sure that both of you are present, but it'll be the November 3rd meeting.
Yay.
It's the goal.
Thank you for that service. And then the other thing, do you want to say Light Up Arinda? Light Up Arinda, that it's going to be?
Oh, yes. Light Up Arinda is expanding this year. And the Arinda Community Foundation has adopted the group from last year and helped to expand its presence. And so Light Up Arinda, we've been working with the organizers of the event in a cosponsored fashion that this will extend Lighting Up Arinda all the way down Arinda Way and all through the Theater District as well. So the amount of lit trees will be expanded sixfold from what you've seen previously. It'll be really impressive, and I think it'll be a great kickoff. I think the kickoff is November 9th. I, don't quote me on that, but it's, it's that first week of November. I'll get a, I'll get a better date, and I'll report it to you at the October 7th meeting.
Okay. And then the other date I just wanted on the council's agenda is we have a date for Winterfest?
Winterfest is December 5th. So mark your calendars for December 5th.
Thank you. There's a lot going on. That brings us to Item K, Matters Initiated. Are there any matters initiated tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn. And so the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Thank you all.
Thank you.